Hey, good morning. This is the Lawrence Township work session for fire department grant. We had a problem with camera one, so for the first minute and fifty-five seconds, you'll see our YouTube channel on the screen, but after that it straightens out.
I'd welcome everyone. And I will, no objection from Lester or John, turn it over to Archer.
I'm not sure what this is about, so this will be good.
Well, you know what? You're in the fog, that's all right.
That's all right.
You got jet lag, we'll just keep you in the fog.
Okay, that's fine.
Morning, Jim.
Proceed, sir.
Thank you. This was initially set up so that we could do a meeting prep for tonight's meeting, which was canceled. So, in the meantime, we did talk to the fiscal officer and trustee Lockhart about looking into the options of doing a safer grant for Lawrence Township Fire Department, thinking that that would help us expand the township coverage of the fire department so that we could maybe beef up North Lawrence's area also. But the way that the grant reads, we don't qualify for the volunteer part of it. And we don't, once we really got into looking at what the grant entailed, we also would not be able to be whole at the end of the grant because it was a matching grant that was thirty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent matching. And then, at the end of the grant, you have put on those, that amount, whatever number of people you were applying for.
Permanently?
Yeah, they're not part of your, they're not part of your forces, which some of the other places that we looked at that did those types of things, which was North Lawrence and East Wing Fire District, they either had a waiver or the grant was set up a different way where it covered, you know, a hundred percent of it. So, we don't qualify for any of that. So, for us, right now, that grant process doesn't do anything for us through Safer. And in that respect, you know, we have it available to us, I think, for, you know, maybe later on down the road, you know, if things change or, you know, manpower changes or something like that, where, you know, anything goes south in any direction, that we are eligible for that. But, you know, nothing is set in stone, just because you ask for it doesn't mean you get it. We know that for sure. So, we've, we kind of abandoned that for right now, just simply because it's not worth us putting the paperwork and the time and all that stuff into it. We know we can't fund it, so there's no sense in doing that. But that was, that was the reason that we continued to have this meeting so that we could talk about that, once the other meeting was, was canceled, so.
North Lawrence, I think they said they cannot apply for it again or something? Is that right, by themselves?
I don't know.
They can't, there's no extension for it, so they can't extend the previous one, but they can reapply for it, anyone can reapply for it.
Yeah.
So, they were in the middle of a grant cycle when theirs ran out because they, they used their money wisely.
Maybe that's why.
And they extended their money out, so they fell in the middle of a grant cycle, so this is the grant that they can reapply for.
Oh.
Do you know they are?
I do not know if they are applying for it or not. But, you know, I'm primarily the one that takes care of these things or whatever, in conjunction with the chief, and getting into the weeds of this or whatever. It might be an option for us in the future, but right now, it's not a good option for us. It may be for North Lawrence. It, it all depends upon the narratives you can write. So, what case can you make to get the funding? And then they score you on the case that you make. If North Lawrence makes a good case for, to get funding, they could receive the grant again.
What is, what constitutes a case? What do you, what are your ingredients for that?
Like Chief Stewart said, this program in the past, this is a scaled back program from what it used to be. It used to be a hundred percent funded, and then it scaled back a little bit. So, your first year would be a hundred percent funded for all your staffing that you applied for, and then they would pay for ninety percent, and then they'd pay for seventy-five percent. Well, now it's, what was it?
Thirty-five, seventy-five.
You paid thirty-five the first year, and seventy-five and ninety, or so. I mean, you, we pay the bulk of it now. It's scaled back from what it used to be. Unless you apply for a waiver, and it's an economic hardship waiver. So, you've got to prove that your jurisdiction or your organization is under economic distress. And that would be like job loss in the area, foreclosures in the area, property devaluations in the area, none of which we can prove right now.
And it's, we can't use it to support our current staffing. It has to be new staff.
It's additional, picking up its new hire.
Yeah, it has to be new hires.
Picking up its new hire.
We, we originally looked at it as we were going to try to just apply for two, two, two people so that we could add a fourth person twenty-four hours a day down in North Lawrence's district, and then we could have an officer on twenty-four hours a day. So, effectively, there would be, you know, eight people combined with Canal Fulton, large township of North Lawrence. In large township, there would be eight people on staff. But it just, when we started running the numbers on that.
Cost prohibitive.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do it at the end.
Our cost share would make it cost prohibitive.
Yeah. So, it's a good plan for somebody who can afford to do it, and for somebody who doesn't have any staffing. We, we meet all the staffing requirements because of our mutual aid system that we set up, and the way that we do the twenty-four hour staffing here, we meet all the minimum requirements. There's, there's nothing we can say that we're, you know, that we're lacking right this very moment. So, for us, that just doesn't work.
The staffing level should be four firefighters on an engine company. That's, that's the, the minimum staffing that they're trying to get fire departments to meet. So, if North Lawrence applies for a grant, and they're at three right now, they could make a pretty good case for four, you know, that they need a fourth. So, they could make a case, you know, I could see them making a case to get the grant again. However, with our agreement with Canal Fulton, and they pay for half, and we pay for half, it's hard for us to say that we don't meet the standard, even though we only pay for half.
Yeah, it's a, because it says right in there that includes your staffing and all mutual aid companies. So, it would be hard for either one of us to make that argument that, you know, we're twelve hours short of staffing. We're not, we're actually not.
When you say either one, Canal Fulton or Lawrence?
Yeah.
But North Lawrence?
They, they may still be able also, and I don't know if they did in the past, I don't know if that's how they got their granting, their grants covered, but they may be able to use the hardship waiver because of their, you know, they're, have a certain amount of money, and that's it. And for them to be able to cover the amount of area that they're covering, and with three individuals not meeting the NFPA engine standard, they may be able to do that.
What's NFPA?
NFPA is the National Fire Protection Agency. They're the ones that make a lot of the rules for safety and all that kind of stuff for us. And a lot of times, you, you can't really afford to meet them a hundred percent. They kind of do that on purpose for you. But, but we try to, you know, try to abide by those rules as much as we can because of, you know, firefighting safety and all that kind of stuff, so.
It's just a two-year grant, isn't it?
Three-year grant.
Oh, three?
Yeah.
But these grants, so cycle to cycle, they change. You know, like I said, they used to be almost fully funded, now they're scaling it back. So, they change on a, on a yearly basis or on a cycle basis, they change. Next year doesn't, because of like this rate, doesn't mean we wouldn't qualify in the future, or things may change in our system that might qualify us, or their rules might change, so. But it takes a lot of work to get down in the weeds of these grants, to, to get all the way down through, and you may realize halfway through the grant that it's not necessarily a good fit. So, it takes a little bit of time and investigation and research in order to figure out whether, you know, whether you can utilize it or not.
You're talking about a grant that would fund additional staffing? Was there any ceiling on the additional staffing number?
No, it just depends on what you can meet out of your fiscal coffers because we saw grants in there from two-hundred thousand dollars all the way out to twenty-two million. It just depends on.
Yeah, but these are big cities.
Those are big cities.
Philadelphia, one of the ones that asked for twenty-two million and got funded.
Yeah.
And got funded.
Right.
Yeah, those were awarded grants for the previous year.
Yeah. The, the ceiling is what you can afford to do through your city at the end, or your municipality at the end of the grant period, that's what your ceiling is.
I remember when Canton was going through an issue where, of course, funding, money, loss of jobs, factories closing, if I'm mistaken, they had either six or eight.
They do. They currently have some people funded under this grant.
Okay, and I was, I was quite surprised at the numbers, six, seven, eight?
Yeah, Massillon had ten, right?
Yeah, they had a two-point-seven million dollar grant, I think.
Why did not, okay. I remember reading about Canton for some reason more than Massillon.
What happens when that two-point-seven million, what happens to all them people they employ?
Well, if you, if you can't fund it, then they lose their jobs.
From year to year, it depends. You used to have to maintain your staff, they had different rules in there. So, when the, when the grants first started, you had to maintain that staffing for so many years thereafter, after the grant ran out. Now, there's no stipulation on maintaining the staffing. So, same with North Lawrence, they weren't mandated to maintain their staffing after the grant ran out, grant ran out, they ran out of money, they had to drop back their numbers. They weren't mandated to maintain the staffing.
Same thing East Wing did, same, you know, the East Wing went all the way back to.
But the grants change every year.
Volunteer paid status, you know, from, from four people on staff.
Just depends what grant you apply for and what the rules are at that time.
But the economic condition of your community, if you're.
Only for the waiver, only for the economic hardship waiver. You can apply for these grants for additional staffing to, you're, you're attempting to meet industry standards.
Okay.
So, you've got to make a case that you don't meet the industry standard in some way, and what's your corrective plan of improvement? And we want to add one person on or two people on to meet this industry standard, and then they, they can fund it, they, they may fund it. In order not to pay your cost share, you might apply for a waiver, an economic hardship waiver, not to pay our part, the thirty-five, fifty, seventy-five, or whatever the, the scaling is.
But, but you're saying, at this point, we're meeting everything. So, if there comes a point where we don't, a year or two down the road.
This is an option for us to apply for.
Versus levy money?
Well, if you, if you intend on, see, what that would do for us is it would give us a buffer of three years to increase levy money in order to keep those jobs in place.
But if there's no, I, I hear you.
Okay.
But if there's no penalty at the end, or obligation at the end, why wouldn't you take the three years and run with it? And get sixty or seventy percent, or thirty-five, whatever percent is from a grant? And maybe I'm making it sound more easier than it is, I probably am. But why wouldn't you take that?
But it's not for current staffing, you can't.
No, if you're adding, same, same, we, say we need to add.
Right.
Oh, well, yeah.
Say we drop down, we need to free hire, don't we fluctuate with, with, we lose people, we pick up people, we lose people, we pick up people? Well, if we lose five or six people, and we're down underneath the criteria or whatever you called the, the staffing earlier, the feds said it, or where it sets that, and we're down underneath that number, why, why not apply for the grant? And, and if we're only going to pay thirty-five percent of those three or four people we need to put on, let them pay the other sixty-five for three years, and then you, you, this is me talking.
That's why I'm saying it's an option in the future.
Yeah.
It can only be one year.
At thirty-five percent.
Yeah, and the next year would scale back to fifty, and the next year you pay seventy-five percent.
It's like a balloon.
So, you've got to be able to afford.
Okay, okay, I'm hearing that.
Yeah.
But you're still getting money, you're still getting money without having to tap into your own.
If you can make a case that you don't meet the standard. We currently meet, meet the standard because we're working in conjunction with Canal Fulton. They supply two people, we supply two people, we have four people on staff. We, we can't make a case that we don't have four people on staff.
Right now?
Right now.
We would have to, you know, we would have to say we're going to put six on staff and do two extra people. But then, towards the end of that, we have to have the money in the budget to pay seventy-five percent of a hundred and thirty-one thou, a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars or something like that. We have to have that for two people, so that would mean that at the end of the grant cycle, in order for us to comply, we would have to have two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for two people for twenty-four, you know, to cover that twenty-four hour.
Additional for what was happening now, additional money.
If, if we put on more people. But I'm talking about if you fall down, if you, if you fall under the required, whatever they're listing, and you go under that number. We had a situation three or four years ago where we were, we were down, and we, through the course of meeting with Canal Fulton, if my memory is correct, we agreed to put that fourth person on. Sound right?
Yeah.
Canal Fulton did agree, but they didn't. Okay. Well, that meant we had to come up with money for that fourth person.
Correct.
Well, there's a grant out there, if I'm hearing you right. There's this grant right here to pay for that fourth person.
Yeah, the difference is that grant, this grant may take a year. You know, it goes through a process that's almost a year long. And then you get, find out whether or not you meet the criteria for the grant, and whether they're going to fund the grant. And then you have another two or three months to put everything in place. So, now we're a year and three months into this, and like right now, where everything got extended because of the government shutdowns, now you're adding, you know, months at a time onto that. I don't know what the exact number is, but, you know, we're still waiting on stuff to come back from last year that didn't get done. We're still waiting on those grants to come back in. So, if we're, if we, and, and you can't pull the trigger on this at any point in time throughout the year. It's, the grants are open from this time for forty-five days. Is that what it is, about forty-five days? So, they, they say, okay, you know, March twenty-eighth, the grant cycle starts. You have until, you know, the middle of, of whatever, March thirtieth, you have till that time to get your grant out, and then the grant's closed. So, if you run into that problem in July, that grant's not there. It's not going to be there until the next time they tell you it's open, which might be next, yeah, next February or March. So, that's part of the problem is, you know, one of the issues is that you don't, you don't have these things available to us all the time. It's only available at this point in time, and, and so you have to make it fit your situation at this point in time, which.
Well, I, I'm hearing you.
Yeah.
But I guess because I'm.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's an option for the future.
Yeah.
It's an option.
And, and, and saying that, if there's, North Lawrence, in their situation, did receive and garnered a significant amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
No?
Four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand.
Okay. Over?
Three years.
Three years. That's a good chunk of change.
Yes, it is.
But they didn't, they didn't have to pony up any money, thirty-five, fifty-five, that was all to them. They didn't have to pay.
I don't, yeah, they, they probably had a cost share, and they might have gotten that waived under an economic hardship.
That's where the hardship part kicks in.
From, from everything that I've read, I think it would be a hard case for us.
You're, you're, I, I guess what I'm trying to get clear in my mind is, without beating the horse, you're going to keep this on the radar. It would be something you look at. But again, in my mind, if, and our staffing, I mean, I hear you come in every now and then and we lose people. And then we go for a time where we're, I don't want to call it down, but I guess I'll call it down. And then we're going to rehire some people. Well, okay, if we're not in the window to apply for this grant when we're down, then it goes for not, because we're not in the window.
Correct.
That's a bummer.
This is the first time that we've really, really looked into this grant, really investigated. It's a very complicated and, and time-intensive grant to do. So, this is the first time that we've really gotten into this. But then we came to the conclusion that it's not right for us now, but it could be.
I guess where I'll end my, my dissertation is, if Canton, Massillon, Philadelphia got twenty-two million dollars, then Lawrence Township ought to be keeping it on the radar if you get twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Because that's twenty thousand that we don't have to take out of our existing, your money, our taxpayers' money, if it's out there. That's what I'm, I guess I'm coming around.
If we qualify.
Well, I think a part of the confusion is that, you know, when we lose people, it's not because we don't have funding to have those people. When we lose people, it's because they got a full-time job somewhere else. Like, we just had two guys that just got hired at the City of Massillon, day before yesterday. So, we have two guys that used to work a lot of shifts that are going to now take a leave of absence. They're going to go down and do their first three or four months at the City of Massillon, so we are going to be without them for three or four months. And both of them work probably eight to ten shifts a month. So, technically, on paper, we're down two people, but we're not, we still have people to fill those slots. So, if we had another downturn like we did for the property taxes going way down, and we lost a bunch of money with the governor taking stuff out of our coffers, and we take another, you know, a hundred and some odd thousand dollar hit out of our budget.
Then this is something.
Yeah, now, we're talking about where, we had to make, we had to make manning cuts because we didn't have funding. Now, we've lost people, that's the difference.
Is there any grants out there for buildings?
I've been looking, I, I have been looking into a couple.
Because when we was doing this fire district way back when it first, when I got here and we started talking about it, we went up to, God, it was Youngstown somewhere, went to it, and they got a whole building.
Yeah, Cardinal Fire District.
Yeah, they got a whole building. I forget what the.
I have one sitting on my desk right now that I'm, that I'm looking into.
Okay, because that was, that was a lot of money that we didn't, there was no twenty percent or anything. That was, they got the money.
Yeah, a lot, some, a lot of those are five percent.
Five percent?
Yeah, it's a five percent match.
Okay, I didn't think they even had to pay that, but they did.
Yeah. For the buildings and even our equipment, we, we do a five percent match for our equipment.
Five percent?
Yeah.
I just wondered if we're looking into that too, so appreciate that.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I guess in, coming back around a little bit then to where I'm at, you, this will stay on the radar, it's not a fit right now. But, again, surrounding communities garnering the kind of money that, that they have, and the kind of assistance that they've gotten.
Yeah.
I just know that we got five fire levies on, on, that generate so much money. We just recently got a bump from our residents graciously for additional funds. This is something that tells me that if our manpower gets too expensive, and we're getting priced out of the market, we damn well better be looking at this. Does that make sense? Okay.
Absolutely.
It's a yearly, it's a yearly look back, is what you're saying also.
Yeah.
I know almost all the grants come out in February, March.
Yeah.
Everything.
You guys do a great job. You guys do a great job.
I have, I have a number of grants that I've written that are still out there right now. We've got a grass fire department.
But this is specifically for here. This is specifically for manpower?
Specifically for manpower, yes. Some of the, you know, some of the language in here was to create full-time positions, from part-time to full-time positions, and that's essentially what North Lawrence did. They created full-time positions from part-time positions. One of the things that changed just recently is they added a thing in here called a job share position, and that's something that piqued my interest because it was never a good fit because we always talked about the, you know, full-time employees, we don't want to pay benefits, we don't rate. So, so, one of the things that piqued my interest in looking at this grant this time is it because it said job share position, and what that means is essentially a number of people can share a full-time position, and that was a new thing that I'd never seen before. It's why I started initially looking into it.
Oh, several departments?
No, 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 so, so, there's one firefighter position, we want one firefighter asking for one firefighter position. That's a twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, thirty-sixty-four days a year, three people can share that position. Or six people, or nine people can share that position.
Okay.
Okay, and that's a thing that I've never seen before.
That would fit the criteria for a full-time position, it doesn't have to be by.
But it wouldn't essentially be part-time.
Hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what piqued my interest this time into looking into it, was it seemed like a better fit for us this time because of some of the wording that came out, until I got so far into the grant and realized that it was going to be cost prohibitive because of the, the cost share portions that they have there right now. And it's additional, so it's additional staffing, and we already meet the criteria that they're looking to improve fire departments to get to.
Well, thank you for doing all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, 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 it's just, we're always looking for ways to save money, you know, the fire truck, the air packs, the GIO, we're always looking for grant money. And we've been relatively successful, so, always looking.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
This is called Safer?
Yeah.
This is, it's through FEMA.
Yeah.
Through FEMA. They have three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars this year to give you out.
Across the country.
Across the country.
Across the country. Well, if one entity got twenty-two million, you know what that means?
Yes.
Not that any, any thing doesn't help, or not that any amount. The amount of time you spend, of course, into investment, and I'm hearing you that it's tiered now, and you have to meet obligations. But I did find it quite interesting that you said at the end of the time window, you don't have to keep those people.
You do not.
So, I see it as a no risk.
Correct.
I, I, that's my view, I see it as a no risk. If you get it, you've got personnel paid for it for three years, a percentage of it.
A percentage.
But if you needed them anyway, and you were short, that's found money.
And, and that is meant to be a buffer, though. That, that timeframe is a buffer for you to ramp up what you have in your coffers so that at the end of that time, you can sustain that personnel. Because, as an example, if we went from four people to two people, now we're way down. And, and we don't want to do that for three years and then go backwards again.
Yeah, that would be crisis management, that, you don't want to do that.
But if you need them, you need them, you're not just putting them on really definitely, you know.
Yeah.
Actually, we only have two people, right?
We pay for two people twenty-four hours a day, or four, twelve hours a day, yes.
We actually, as a township, pay for two.
Right, and that's what we were looking at, but the, the way the grant is written, it also includes all of your mutual aid. And we have automatic mutual aid agreements with Canal Fulton, so, you know, that, that automatically puts that.
Right, I understand.
Because we automatically go to all their calls, they automatically go to all of our calls.
Right, so what's that, do you work, that kind of puts you down then on the, your ammunition?
Yeah, it makes it so that we meet, we meet, we're lucky, we meet the criteria.
Okay, 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 that qualifies, okay.
Yeah. We're fortunate.
So, these, I don't want to say it grants a bailout, but it's a buffer, it's a cushion, it's evidently somebody's dangling carrot out there for them. But if you got, and, and I can't imagine what their, what their cost would be for a city the size of Philadelphia, but if you get twenty-two million dollars, you know.
That payroll line item is probably.
Well, but, but, I mean, that's a chunk of funds. That's a bunch of money.
Well, you figure, Massillon got two-point-seven?
I think theirs was two-point-seven.
With three years for ten guys, so how many?
Okay, now, was it twenty-two million over three years, or twenty-two million per year?
No, that was twenty-two million awarded over three years.
Well, it's still a lot of money.
And I don't know how many people that funded, but I believe it was Philadelphia that got that one. They were one of the biggest in the nation.
Now, Massillon, when they're three years, is their three years up now?
I, I, I would have to look back at what year I know that.
What are they going to do with them people that they?
Who's that?
Massillon.
Oh, Massillon?
Will they be able to keep them?
Yeah, Massillon, Massillon kept them, they needed them, they, I mean, they couldn't handle the call volume. So, remember when, when they, they laid off twenty percent of the firefighters in Massillon? That's how they funded them through that grant to bring them back, and they haven't been able to sustain thereafter.
They just, they needed some time to get their.
Firing struck around, they went through that, that crisis.
Yep.
They had a separate board outside.
Fiscal urgency come in.
Thank you. Fiscal emergency.
So, they did keep them, which is good. I didn't want to see them all just irate.
Well, we needed them, I mean, I worked down there, we needed them.
Yeah.
The call volume down there is staggering, it is. I mean, since I've been there, we doubled call volume.
We have almost, we've really got up one heartbeat.
Yeah, like three, thirteen-hundred-and-eighty was what we did somewhere in that vicinity last year.
Thirteen-eighty-six.
Thirteen-eighty-six.
But that's up from eleven-hundred from the year before, or not?[1751.18]
No, the year before, we did almost the exact same amount.
Yeah, we, we had a couple of years where we did, uh, you know, twelve or thirteen percent increases, but we did that a couple of years in a row, so over a couple of years, we have.
Yeah, oh, we're even, this year, last year, we're even, but the previous two years were eleven and thirteen percent perspective.
So you're working on some others, we, we are not, or the department chooses, and you guys choose not to pursue this at least at this point. It's not a good fit.
Right.
We're meeting criteria.
Yep.
We're always looking, we're always trying.
Yep, looking at all that stuff that they sent me from Grassroots Magazine and all that stuff, they always have great stuff listed in there. But you have to read it real close because like some of the grants that we get from like the Fire Marshal's Office or, or from the state, you, you have to meet population requirements. So, you know, you have to be under, you know, ten thousand people to even be able to apply for the grant. So they gear it towards, you know, rural communities or your budget has to be below, the one I looked at was fifteen thousand dollars. You'd have a budget below fifteen thousand dollars to apply for the grant, well.
Well, then they all have, they all have in essence, the rest of the story.
Yeah.
Because we have gotten into a few arrangements where we have gone in and purchased, uh, I won't mention anything particular, but one that makes noise every, uh, month.
Yeah.
And now we get into that endeavor and that's fine, but then there's the rest of the story.
Right, yeah.
The maintenance, this, this, and it's, it's, the devil's in the detail.
Yeah.
You guys are doing an, an excellent job of, of sifting through. I guess I was just hearing and maybe I, I got sidetracked on them fascinating numbers and replacement of personnel and paying for, you know, uh, folks. It's like, hmm, let's, uh, let's, let's hear more about this.
If I can make it fit, I can make a case, I, I'm all about ready to grant.
You've done, you, you all have done a champion job, really all of our departments have.
Very good.
We even got, we even got the road superintendent in just a little bit of help there once in a while. So he, uh, you know, if it's out there, it oozes to, to look at it, but, uh, that's a safer one, okay?
So that's, I mean, that's pretty much all we have for today, because that other meeting got suspended for a little bit. So we'll, um, from what I understand, the mayor and Mr. Lockhart are gonna have a.
Sit down here next week or so.
Once that, once that happens, then maybe we'll have a little bit more information to go back to the drawing table with and see what we can come up with.
Well, that's.
That's what we're at.
Can I just bring something different for a fire department today or not? And this is just a.
Fire department work session.
Yeah, that's all good.
I just wanted news to get out there about something.
Well, you're, uh, you're buying lunch?
I can do that.
Oh, all right.
No, it's about something that's gonna happen Sunday and I just wanted the people to know about it. Would that be something you're not allowed to say?
A public service announcement?
Yeah.
I'm not a lawyer. I, I, you know, uh.
I just seen him back there and thought it was.
It's a, it's a public service announcement.
We'll do a special after this.
There you go. All right, well, during this work session, and you do your public service announcement.
Well, I just wanted you guys, something important, you guys might get calls on.
Well, let's, let's adjourn this meeting, all right? And, uh, I'll make that motion, do we have a?
Oh, we don't motion.
Oh, we don't motion, thank you, good, good.
Thank you for your time.
We're done with, uh, with this session and you make your public service announcement.